This is a special meeting.
Go ahead.
Okay, this is a special meeting of the Environmental Trust Governance Committee in docket number 10-T-0139, the Champlain-Hudson Power Express Project. I'm currently, or TDI is currently serving as the Chair of the Committee, and I am Bill Helmer, the representative, one of the representatives. And I want to thank everyone for joining the special meeting on such short notice. We have a pretty short agenda. We're going to continue with our regular meeting in December, at which time we will approve the minutes of our, I think it was June meeting, and the minutes of this meeting. So we don't need to have any motions about the... What's that? We don't need to have any motions on the minutes, and we'll proceed just to the first item on the agenda. And I would propose that we have a discussion about it, and then entertain motions after we've had a full discussion. Josh, do you want to take the baton and sort of do the overview?
Sure, thanks, Bill. Bill, can you hear me okay?
I can.
Great. So, good morning, everybody. Again, thank you for taking the time for the special meeting. This is Josh with TDI. So essentially, as Matt has provided via the agenda that he sent out on November 4th, we've provided a document in there called ETG2 Notice Special Meeting. This essentially describes this acceleration of funds that we are proposing and that we hope that this committee will endorse. I won't obviously reread the letter that we provided to everybody, but essentially, what we are proposing to do is to accelerate the funding for the Environmental Trust. As a reminder, the, what is in the current certificate is that at financial close, which we expect to occur in Q1 of 2022, $2.5 million will be deposited into the trust. And then essentially, for the four-year construction period, there would be no additional funds in the trust. What we're proposing is to accelerate that funding so that there would be that $2.5 million. And if you're looking at the PDF document that Matt sent, that's probably the best thing to look at here. The, so the acceleration of the funds is essentially to put $3.125 million into the four construction years. So those would be deposited, you know, every year for the first four years of construction, or for all of construction. So that basically increases the funding available from $2.5 million to $15 million. And then you can see on this funding sheet, the way we do that, we don't increase the total amount available. It still remains at $117 million. So what we're proposing to do here is to reduce the out-years funding by different increments. Some as little as $10,000, some as much, you know, some quite a bit greater than that. And that basically keeps it at $117 million, which is, which is what it is. So we're moving money from the out-years into the construction period. From a financing perspective, that actually costs TDI money due to the net present value of money. And so that's what we're proposing. We think it's, it's, it's good to get more projects funded sooner and to kind of tie that with the construction. So that, that's the base proposal here. Again, we, we, and we've been in touch both with the Hudson River Foundation about this, as well as with other folks on the committee, the DOS and the DPS. And we felt that the next step, I think it has to be a vote from this committee to hopefully endorse that acceleration of funding. And then due to the way the certificate's written, we would, we would need to submit an amendment to the DPS to kind of, to make, to change the certificate, to change the funding stream. So that's what we're proposing to do. That's sort of the background. This acceleration of funding, as we said in our letter, has been made in cooperation, in conjunction with NYSERDA. And so I think hopefully that provides enough of an overview without rereading the letter. And Bill, unless you want to add anything else, or Matt, or Heather, we can take questions on it.
Thank you, Josh.
One, two, three, four. This is Roger. I do have a comment on the fourth paragraph where it says, "Projects in the Hudson River, Harlem River, East River, and in Lake Champlain." If my memory serves, we had discussed that the conception here with regard to projects would be that it would extend to the Hudson River watershed and not just the main stem of the Hudson? I'm thinking of wetlands, tributaries, things like that.
Yeah, I believe that's the language in the certificate. I mean, we, I think that the amendment application will be quite specific about the, quote the exact certificate language and indicate that that is the scope. I'm not sure we want to try to capture every nuance in the certificate in the resolution that we've put before, or the resolution that we're about to put before the committee. But certainly, we can amend it if someone wants to.
We'd be happy with just something like a reference to the watershed, because there's, there's a lot of stuff that's going on with dams that are failing on both sides of the river that create a lot of danger and some actual harm in terms of what a failure would result in and what's happening to the water quality in the Hudson because of what's going on in those tributaries.
I think my recollection, Roger, is similar to what Bill said, but I think it's focused on the fact that the projects have to be for the benefit of the restoration, et cetera, of the Hudson River, Lake Champlain, Harlem River, and East River, which I think we all understood at the time this was negotiated to encompass tributaries and wetlands that would obviously potentially impact the health of.
Okay. Just don't.
We should all, we should check. We should all go back and check and not rely on our memories from eight years ago.
Well, with all those originalists that are sitting in the courts these days, I just wanted to be careful about the plain language of the document at the time that it was originally written, whether it was 1794 or earlier.
Well, how about this? I'll propose, and we haven't yet offered this by motion. Matt, do you have the pen and the word document? We might want to add Hudson, Harlem, and East Rivers, and Lake Champlain. And, and, or in, as, make some sort of reference to the certificate. Not that I'm talking and thinking out loud. I'm kind of tangling it up a little bit.
Yeah. Bill, why don't you just say to the benefit, the projects that benefit?
Or just put watersheds?
Yeah, maybe. Let's see what it says. All right, it's displayed.
So if you see in the first sentence there, it references the ecological significance of the watersheds.
Yeah.
The final word is "to the benefit of these water bodies." So is there a suggested amendment?
I think it's good as it stands.
I think, Bill, we're, we're, there's two different documents. There's the letter that doesn't, that I think maybe is what we were just talking about, but this is the resolution that's on the screen that we're hoping that we want to bring to a vote. So the resolution on the screen, I think Bill Helmer's the most important thing to look at. And does that seem accurate with, with water bodies or watershed?
I, I, I think so, but, I mean, Roger, this is the actual operative document. So if this is okay, we're good to go.
Yeah, no, I understand that one of them says watersheds of, and the other doesn't.
So the letter isn't as quite as precise, maybe, as it, as it... No, we're not asking you to endorse the letter, Roger.
So, so Roger, I mean, would it help if it said, "And the watersheds of Hudson, Harlem, and East Rivers"?
Yeah, if we could just track the resolution into the letter, that's fine.
Okay. I mean, the letter.
If someone were to really nitpick this, the only watersheds that would be involved would be Lake Champlain.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
But we've also got the certificate condition 165, right? Which is not going to be changed by the signing of this document, as I understand it. And that, I think, is a little bit clearer in saying that the purpose of the fund is protect, restore, improve aquatic habitat and fisheries resources in the Hudson, Harlem, East, Lake Champlain, and their tributaries. So that's, that's kind of more specific in the certificate condition, which at the end of the day is really what we've got to stick to in terms of the scope of.
Isn't it easily fixed by just adding watersheds of right before the word Hudson in the second line?
Yes.
So why don't we do that?
I think that conforms all three, because otherwise someone could pick it apart if they were so inclined.
Yep.
I'm sorry, it's, it's the, it's the law school in me.
It's okay.
How's that? Well, that doesn't read quite as elegantly as it should, Matt. I mean, you could say the watersheds of Lake Champlain, and it probably should say, "And the watersheds of the Hudson, Harlem, and East Rivers," I think.
That works.
Okay, so we've actually got a friendly amendment in place. Is it, before we actually go to the formality of a motion, does anybody else have anything they'd like to adjust here?
This is Laura McLean from DOS. There's a repetitive "that." So when it says, "Therefore, be it resolved that," and then semicolon, that should actually probably, the "Therefore, be it resolved" should be its own line, and then there's a repetitive "that" after the colon. Yes. So we can, exactly, thank you.
What do we fill in the blank? Is it five members as a quorum or six? Does anybody remember? I should know. Who's the parliamentarian?
I believe it would be six members.
Yeah, I thought it was.
That establish a quorum. I believe we have more than six present.
Oh, that's quite right. That's, you, you, you have to, let's, let's, let's do a head count. That's, that's right. The blank is supposed to be the actual people here.
Gold diner here. We have reps from DOS, DPS, APA, DEC, Trout Unlimited, Certificate Holder, Sina Hudson, Riverkeeper, and New York City. I think that's all of us.
That's eight, right?
DOS, DPS, APA, DEC, Trout, Certificate Holder, Sina Hudson, Riverkeeper, and New York City, that's nine.
Oh, nine, okay. Thank you. All right, then we fill in the last blank after we vote. So I, I think that the general sense is this is a good news story. Does anyone have any problems with us proceeding to have a motion on this resolution as it's been edited?
Can I just ask, what's the motivation behind this, this resolution? It does seem like a good news story, but somebody's going to ask me, "So why are they doing this?"
Well, I, I mean, it's a good thing to do. And as the letter, as the letter said, I mean, this was kind of, arose out of the NYSERDA award. And NYSERDA's sense that, you know, some of the environmental provisions should be enhanced. And we didn't disagree. So we were, and then we chatted with DPS and State, and we looked at the certificate and realized that we actually do have to amend the schedule. Nothing else, just the schedule. So that's the short answer, Richard.
Great, thanks a lot for that, Bill.
You're welcome. All right. We do have a chat with the Hudson River Foundation after this. Does somebody want to make a motion to adopt the resolution as it's been edited here? Could be anybody.
Sure, this is Heather. I move to adopt the resolution as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Who's second?
Was that Laura?
That was Haley.
Okay, so we, the motion is made and seconded. Traditionally, you asked for any further discussion. Is there any additional discussion before we vote? Okay. I guess we'll call the question, as they say. All in favor of adopting this resolution and using it as the basis for a request to the Public Service Commission to amend the schedule in certificate condition 165? Please say aye.
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 Any, anyone want to vote nay? Hearing none, any abstentions? Hearing none, we have a unanimous vote. The motion is adopted. And signatures will be sought in due course. We'll do, we'll need nine signature lines. One, two, three, four, five. I guess we got 10, so we got enough on there. Okay, thank you, everyone. That is wonderful. I really think this is one of the red-letter days in the history of the project. And so the support, well, let me just say, the patience of all of you. Some of you go way back, like I do, is very, very much appreciated. And thank you for your support on this, this particular milestone. Can we go back to the agenda, please?
Hey, Bill, if I could just say something too, real quick. I, I thank you as well, everybody. And now the real work begins. And that's what Hudson River Foundation is going to talk about next.
I guess that's my cue. I hope everyone can hear me. Good morning, and, and thanks for being here. I, I hope you had a chance to take a look at the document that was circulated by Matt yesterday. I know it wasn't a lot of time. And I want to make just a couple preliminary comments prior to sharing my screen with you in a short PowerPoint presentation. What we sent yesterday is, is not in any way cast in stone. It's a discussion document, and it's really what I hope will be the beginning of many discussions regarding how decision-making can and should be made regarding this project. And, and again, please don't look at this as the only path forward. It's one of many possible paths, but it's, it's the one that I'd like to start with in hopes that you will provide as much possible feedback as you can to the Hudson River Foundation as possible. So let me share my screen right now. I'm going to switch to a PowerPoint, so I think I need to take over. Josh, if you're sharing, I will. Okay, let me share mine for right now. Okay, and if, hopefully you can see this.
We can.
Terrific. And please stop me along the way. I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm happy to actually ask for, for real input as we go. You know, our motivation as a foundation, as we've thought about our role as the administrator is to think not just as moving money, but how can we be most helpful to the process? And certainly, as this became potentially more real with the acceleration of funding, I think all of us here thought carefully about what can we do? What must we do? And what are the structures that are available to move information and to share decision-making? So those are our motivations. And I, and I think to really echo the, you know, what everyone has spoken about already, the driver in this certainly is acceleration funding over the next four to five years. The codified document, the certificate, which is so important for all our thinking going forward. But then a recognition that, that as the money becomes available, as we want to make decisions, you want to make decisions, that the timing is going to be short. And we collectively have a lot of work to do, as Josh has just said. There's a lot that needs to happen quickly in order for these projects, not only to get off the ground, but to have a high likelihood of success. And in my mind at least, as I think about these kind of projects, projects that I've been involved with that, that get out of the blocks quickly, though that's a funny term for something that's been around as long as this has, is to make sure we are collectively focused on a strategy for this first tranche of money, or these annual increments for the first four to five years, and then a plan to implement that strategy. And that's my starting point with this. And so now I'm going to just try to walk through a little bit what's in the document, and, and please weigh in as I go forward. I mean, we need to hear from you, even in these early stages of this particular, I guess I would call it a proposal of sorts. For us at the foundation, and I, and I would think for all of you, if there are guiding principles to think through in this as, as the money begins to flow and begins to be spent on these important projects, it's that we include as many stakeholders as possible in this process so that we fairly represent all of the voices that care about how this money is spent and care about the benefits that will bring to multiple watersheds. That we ought to be transparent in all of this and to make sure that people understand that the process is credible and is thoughtful and defensible along the way. And most importantly, that any process that is, we ask of you and we ask of each other, is efficient and especially useful for all of you. We don't want this to be a waste of your time. We want this to be useful in ways that you feel yourselves and your stakeholders are included and have strong voices throughout. In my mind at least, and the, the discussion just a minute ago, I think, was a trigger in terms of thinking about this particular slide. You know, I recall that this has been a very long time since the certificate was originally written. As I looked at that certificate, I, I thought about the time that has passed. I thought about the investments you have made in, in this particular process. And, and I asked a simple question. Is, are we affirming what I extracted as a mission statement? And, and that may be as simple as saying, yes, we are. Or to ask the question, what's remained consistent? And what possibly has changed in, in the many years since that document is, has been drafted? And I think it's, at least in my mind, incumbent upon the Governance Committee to take a look at that mission statement as I cast it and, and simply say, are there changes needed? Or is it simply an affirmation? I am very mindful that, and I've, I've been reminded by a number of folks that the process of crafting a mission statement is often the hardest thing you do when you think about a strategy. And I don't want to have us tied up for months and months in a process like that. And I, but I do think it's worth asking the question of you. Do you think that you need to go through that process? And so what I want to do is just pause now and just get a reaction to that. See what you said.
So this is, this is Haley Karlock, and I was thinking, after Bill, Bill talked about some of the original people that are here, and I think it's, it's pretty much me, Bill Wellman, and Matt are some of the only, Beth Phillips, I guess, too, who are still here from nine years ago. So in terms of the mission statement, I mean, I think we all agree and have already decided that we need to revisit the priority projects for a lot of different reasons. But I would really caution against, unless anyone sees a glaring issue with the mission statement that is just totally inconsistent with, with what we'd want to do here in 2021 and moving forward. I just think that's opening a can of worms. And we, you know, spent a lot of time negotiating that many years ago. And I, obviously, you had the, the same concern to some extent here. We, we need to be efficient and timely. So if someone has a very clear, small edit, I, I think we can all consider that. But I would just caution against, like, opening up this can of worms of, you know, coming up with a new mission statement with, that reflects, you know, everybody's thoughts and priorities. I think the basic mission today is still the same as it was eight or nine years ago.
Thanks for that, Haley. Any other comments along those lines?
This is Matt, just, just to agree with Haley, that, again, a lot of time and effort spent a long time ago, and in the absence of any real desire to change something for real strong reasons, we should leave it as it is.
Yeah, this is Bob Lockmeier. I've been involved with this off and on over the nine years. And I agree with what Haley said. I don't think we want to get bogged down unless there's something really missing that, that we need to add, or it's large, or there's some inconsistency. I don't think it's a real good use of our time to be rewriting the official, the mission statement from, you know, from the get-go. So I think we're able, right now, all of a sudden, we have a lot more to do in a rather short timeframe, so probably could focus our efforts a little bit better.
Any other comments?
I see no reason to review the mission statement.
Sorry, Bill, can you repeat that, please?
Bill Wellman, I see no reason to review the mission statement. That's hammered out with some difficulty.
Okay. All right, good. Well, as, as I said, that, you know, it's, it's an affirmation. And I, I would ask that if anyone has any input to that question that I just posed, to please let us know. You know, it seems like there's strong consensus, at least from those who have spoken, that there should be no changes to this. But I'll, I'll leave that question open for right now and see if there's anything that anyone wants to weigh in, and we can perhaps revisit that. But again, you know, an affirmation is a good thing to start with in any kind of planning process. The second piece, as someone coming into this somewhat new, is, is to think about what's needed to support decision-making and to think about the structures that were codified in the initial certificate. And I think as an outsider, and again, to someone who would think about facilitated these kinds of processes, the question really in my mind is, what do you need? What's, what are the best ways to get input? Certainly, the Governance Committee is, in, in, in any of these processes, there's a hierarchy, and the Governance Committee, where you all sit, is the ultimate arbiter of decisions moving forward. And the structure of the technical work groups is solid. But I, I think in my mind and in discussions with others, that the sense is that what you'd like is to have very strong technical input, enhanced by external technical review. But you'd want to be able to drive that through a process where priority setting is very clear. Now, this isn't a final structure for this, but what one possibility would be to think through how priorities are going to be set. Is that a subcommittee of this group? Are there other staff that can support that? They would take information from both the external technical review driven through the technical work groups, and then also to accommodate stakeholder input from a variety of sources. I, I'm very cognizant that you all speak for many communities. The question is how to take that information efficiently in a way that can lead to priority setting. So I don't think we need to decide exactly on this, but I'd, I'd like to get a quick reaction to thinking through, or at least a commitment to think through how this process will work in a way that, again, is efficient, but also asked the question is, are the current structures the right ones to give you the right information to make decisions on what will be a significant amount of funding, not just in the first four years, but in the many years that follow? So floor is open. Any responses to that?
This is Laura from DOS. At our last regular meeting, one of the committee members suggested a proposal nomination process in order to take ideas and input from stakeholders. I just want to. Just want to remind folks of that. I think that was well received.
Okay, good.
Hey, John, this is Josh. It's not really a suggestion, it's more just of a comment. Maybe a month ago, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service New York office reached out to me, sort of asking, how can they provide input? So I just want to make sure that there's a process that we develop pretty soon, such that when we get kind of that kind of outreach, we don't lose track of people who want to get involved in the process. So that's the only one I've gotten, but obviously, a very important stakeholder who has a lot of expertise on things we'll be talking about. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that happened, and we need to make sure that that stakeholders and many others kind of know how to get involved when it's time.
Absolutely. And I think one of the, perhaps there'll be another slide that says, what are the right stakeholders? Who are the right stakeholders? Who is missing right now? And what's the best and most efficient way to engage them? So their input and frankly, their expertise is reflected in decision-making going forward. Any other comments on this as a very, very drafty way to start thinking about this? Okay, you're reading on, I'll go forward. So this sort of echoes what Josh just said. Who are the key stakeholders? What additional stakeholders need to be included? What ways can the technical workgroups and potentially other bodies be enhanced by their input? I suspect there are many. And of course, what goes along with this is, what are the outreach strategies that need to be implemented? Is it by region? Is it by stakeholder community? Is it all of those things? How is that stakeholder input to be used? Is it to be synthesized in a variety of ways? And then being very mindful that this is an accelerated timeframe, what and when? When do we need to get this input? I don't have the answers to any of these yet, but I think these are the right questions we collectively need to begin to be asking. In particular, if we are going to get as much information as we need to make good decisions going forward.
So I did want to note that, and there's an additional group that wasn't around when the settlement was first negotiated, and that's the Hudson River Navigation and Safety Committee. So there are multiple stakeholders there that may be, or that may be a venue to reach out to stakeholders and include as a stakeholder themselves. And a lot of folks almost are likely part of that group anyway.
So Matt, could you just speak up a little bit? I wasn't, I don't know if anyone else is having trouble hearing.
Sorry, this mic seems to be problematic, but I apologize. It's the only one I have sitting at my desk. It's just the Navigation and Safety Committee is a new construct since this has been, since this settlement's been negotiated. So we should consider reaching out to that group. And many folks on this line are already part of that.
Great, thank you very much. Any other comments on this slide? Any other thoughts or contributions?
John, I just have, this is Josh again, just, and I haven't been involved in this as long as many folks. How do you kind of get the word out about this? I mean, has that been, that's probably kind of a preliminary comment, but, you know, what, it seems important to let folks know that this opportunity is fast approaching, maybe that the money's increased. So I'm just curious, has that been sort of discussed in the past? Or is that just something that'll be decided as we sort of move forward here?
Great question. And do any of the folks with long institutional memory have any thoughts on that?
I do. Bill Wellman. I've already, and I imagine several other individuals have also tried to keep people who are going to be actively involved in this process informed of where we stand and what the progress has been to date. Certainly, in the case of Lake Champlain, there's already a framework for the input of proposals in the Lake Champlain Technical Advisory Committee, which includes most of the stakeholders that would be involved in this. And I have provided those folks information, for instance, the Lake Champlain Basin Program periodically as we go along, as I will be briefing them after this meeting on what occurred today.
Thanks, Bill. And for the representatives who are thinking more about the Hudson and the other watersheds that we've discussed, are there mechanisms that you can immediately think of that you would, we could deploy in short order to get the kind of information you need? Or do we stand up others? I mean, I think of, there are multiple, in my mind at least, certainly for the Hudson, there are multiple communications pathways.
Yeah, Jonathan, I was thinking, I don't know if E C has any thoughts on this, but some of the Hudson River Estuary Program listservs and the committees that are in service of that group, I think would be a good list to send this information and inquiry out to. I think certainly, Tina Hudson and probably riverkeepers in a similar situation as NGOs, we can probably think off the top of our head of some other groups that would be important to reach out to. And maybe we can have a shared list of that, so we're not sort of duplicating efforts. But like I said, I think some of the lists, like the Hudson River Estuary Program, the Greenway, stuff like that, focused on the Hudson River, would be good places to send this out to. It probably doesn't address the more New York City-based interests, though.
Yeah.
And on behalf, I guess on behalf of the city, I can say that the city has a number of different ways of getting input from all the agency heads and city council. So there'll be plenty of input from the city. I have a question that I don't know the answer to, and I ask it just out of ignorance, sort of. How long is the stakeholder process intended to take place? And I guess my bigger question is, how do we control the stakeholder process so that it doesn't become something that's overwhelming? And we end up, you know, two years of input and nothing happening? And I don't mean this pejorative in any way, but I've been involved with enough things that, I'm just curious about the timing of this and how we get to a point where we actually are making decisions about priority projects and matching that up with the funding. And maybe it's too early to talk about all that, but that is something that's just occurred to me as I'm thinking about all this right now. We've had nine years to think about it, and I probably haven't thought about it enough until now. So I will concede that. But I guess, does anybody have any thoughts on, you know, how this process is going to play out? And what the timing of all this will be to junction with the funding?
So Bob, I'll jump in and let everyone correct me if I don't get this right. But I think it's a really important question. At least for me, it speaks to, in some ways, this group being able to articulate a strategy for the first four or five years, and then asking for input as you move more towards specific implementation of it. I, you know, I know that sounds horribly bureaucratic, but I think some clarity on what this amount of money in general terms could be used for in, to shape the discussion. And then I can't tell you how long it would be. I am really, as I was listening to the conversation, I had much the same thought you did, that stakeholder input can be abundant and diverse in terms of priorities. And that synthesizing that in a way that can be useful to decision-making is oftentimes one of the most difficult parts of any process like this.
And this is Josh. My only comment would be, I don't know if we need to have an end to the stakeholder process. It seems like it can be ongoing for years. There's a steady stream of funding for 30 years. So it feels like if there's enough stakeholders who get on board with sort of the priority projects, get that funding out first, which this acceleration allows, and then just continue to do the outreach and continue to figure out what the next funding proposals are. So for me, I agree, you don't want to do two years of stakeholder outreach and then delay funding. At the same time, you don't want to have people feel like they didn't have a voice. Maybe they're not ready to participate yet, but in three years, they might be. So to me, it feels like a continuous process with funding decisions throughout.
So Bill Wellman, I think a lot of that can be controlled by how we structure the request for proposals that I envisage that the governance committee will eventually issue. And how those are structured can control how much input you want in any given funding year.
I guess this should probably start with Hudson River, but it would probably make sense to set up a subcommittee workgroup that would both solicit and entertain projects, review them, work with the applicants to make sure that their submissions are in proper form, help them deal with anything else, and then have some time limitations built into it, like a deadline to submit within any of the given years. The committee should have its own review timeline so that we know that we can get back to the applicant in timely fashion. And then we have to figure out what the funding source would be. Like, I noticed that there's a blank as to year one. What exactly is year one going to be? And when does that mean that Hudson River gets the first funds? But I think there does need to be some kind of a methodical structure for solicitations, for submissions, for review, and for approval, or send it back to the drawing board and consider it in the next time window. But I don't think we want to end up in a situation where a lot of money keeps getting carried over from year to year to year because we didn't get enough projects approved and out the door.
So Bill, thank you for that. I think one response I would have to that is, I think as the trust administrator, and given the history of the Hudson River Foundation, we're pretty good at that kind of process. What's intriguing to me, I think, and is really the notion of, and I think we need, all of us need to recognize what this means, is that there's a difference between an open solicitation process and one where there's an active working with those who will propose. And they both have tremendous benefits to them, and we have to consider how to use those different tools going forward. I like a mix of them for a variety of ways, my own history with grants and grant administration. But I think that's a, it's a really good point to think through. And my language I've been using all along is, how do you increase the likelihood of success of really important, high priority, and urgent projects that are coming in and doing?
Yeah, I can tell you from some of our experiences in the past that we've really tightened up. Every now and then, a project would be approved, and then there was no, and we built in a provision where the successful applicant had to report back upon conclusion. And that part of it kind of got lost, and it left some unfortunate loose ends that had to be resolved.
Yeah. Well, I had not put in, I think it was in the written document, not in here, but the notion of assessment and how important that is across the board. Assessment for projects, assessment for annual investments, assessment at five-year intervals, things like that. I'm a big fan of assessment as a way to understand how to manage adaptively. Bob, did you have a comment? I saw your name pop up on the screen. Did you have a comment?
I didn't have anything additional, no. Not right now.
Great, thanks.
This is Heather from the D E C. I guess one of the things I want to make sure is that when we solicit for more information, that we do it in the guise of the priority projects that we already lined out. I agree that opening this up to a broader conversation could slow us down. And I'm a little bit worried on a lot of new ideas coming in that the priority projects we've already lined out in the certificate. There are some projects that are priority projects that are no longer valid because they've already been completed, but that doesn't mean the other priority projects left are not equally important. So I want to make sure that we at least stick to those as our framework. And to Haley's comment about the mailing list, yes, the Hudson River Estuary Program Management Advisory Committee, the RE/MAT, is a good mailing list to convey information, and that does span all the way down through New York City. So it does span all the, quite a diverse partnership that has an influence and interest in the Hudson River. So that might be something that we do employ at some point. I just want to make sure we're real careful about how we solicit questions and comments and advice on some of these projects, because I do want to make sure we focus in, at least on the process we'd originally laid out 12 years ago.
And this is Bob. Now, I agree with what Heather just said. I think that was Heather. I think we should, the starting point is the priority projects that we came up with to begin with. That took some time putting those together. It's clearly, some of them may have changed, maybe most of them changed, I don't know. But I think that we should start from there and determine whether those, all those or some of those should go forward, and then add it as needed. But I agree that we have to manage this a little bit so we don't get a flood of proposals that, you know, may not be consistent with either the mission statement or the priorities, projects that we started with.
Well, thank you both for that. I won't have to go through this next slide that I put up. I think you've anticipated what I was going to say. I think there's nothing more I can really add to that, other than, as I looked at the mission statement, the notion of balancing a variety of different kinds of projects and thinking about geographic interests is important as well. Some of that's reflected in the priorities. But I think that would, that notion of going back to those priorities and trying to do a hard look at which ones are more relevant, which ones remain urgent, which ones are less relevant, is probably going to be a critical step for the governance committee and the technical workgroups to think through in the coming months. Okay, so I'm at my last slide, and you've given me, us at the foundation, terrific input. I want to just go back to where I started from, which is, this is a discussion piece, and I'm grateful for the input you've given us so far. I suspect you will want to get time and input from your stakeholders, your agencies, and yourselves to have time to think through. And we would be immensely grateful for you to provide that to us in whatever way you think is most useful and efficient. I want to offer a standing invitation for emails, for phone calls, for Zoom calls. You can reach out to me, and we will collate everything we hear from you and try to bring it back to you as we move forward. I think my last message is, we have to be ready if this happens. There's some administrative things that I, that, you know, with respect to our role and the role of the trust bank that have to get taken care of. But at the foundation, we're committed to helping as much as we possibly can in this process. And the only way we can help is if we hear from you. And so please feel free to contact, reach out to me, and we'll make time for all of this. So with that, I'm going to stop sharing my screen and see.
This is Matt. So thank you for all the work that you put in so far. This is fantastic. I did want to flag that one of the things that we said in the beginning was that we want to be able to use this money to capitalize on any other potential funding sources as kind of a seed money to support other grants or whatnot. So just flagging that and putting that out there, that if anyone's aware of opportunities that, you know, dollars from this trust can go to help grow, I think that's very important to know.
So Bill, I'll turn it back to you as the chair of the committee. Thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you, Jonathan. I want to second Matt's remarks. That's really, that's really tremendous, a tremendous start on what is going to be the nitty-gritty, if you will, of spending all this money. I think that concludes the, unless anyone has any other remarks to make, includes the business of the day. We do have another committee meeting coming up in December, on the 14th. The only to-do thing coming away from this is, as we prepare a certificate amendment, changing the schedule in Condition 165, we're circulating, probably through the secretary, people at D O S, a copy of the resolution asking for signatures of the parties who voted in favor. Now, I don't think we have a timetable yet for preparing this certificate amendment application, but it's quite simple. Josh, I mean, what would we say? A couple of weeks, maybe?
I think so. Steve Wilson's on the phone. He's the one who's going to be He's the one who's going to be putting it together. So I won't put him on the hot seat here, but we'll, we'll intend to, with this unanimous vote, we'll intend to get that amendment in as soon as we can. So I think if we could try to get signatures in the next week, that would be helpful.
Right. All right.
Well, and I did want to flag the changes to the open meeting law that are not affected to this meeting, but are applicable to the, the next meeting. So I think there's some requirements that things get posted before the meeting.
Yeah, thank you, Matt, for reminding me of that. Yeah. The meetings are, are going so smoothly that of course, the, the law had to change to, to make us figure something else out. But it doesn't look too severe.
Bill, this Bill Wellman, it might be helpful before our December meeting if you recirculated the priority project list.
Yeah, I think we can do that. I think we've done that.
So I.
Last year. Go ahead, Josh.
Yeah, there is a, there is a list of projects on our website, on the C H P E website. I, I don't know if it has the specificity that, that you're looking for. But I just would point out, we, we do keep this as updated as we can. If you go to the C H P E website and you go to environmental, you'll see a link for environmental trust fund and then you'll see an additional link for proposed projects. And then that has the, kind of the first, second, third priority by Waterway. So if that's not what you're looking for, let us know and we can, can do something else.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved by D O S?
I'll second for the city.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Hearing none, we stand adjourned. Thank you everybody so much. We will see you in December and be contacting you over the next week for the signatures. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks all.